Good afternoon, everyone. We are going to call the regular meeting of the Delmar College District Board of Regents to order at 1:00 PM on Tuesday, September 9th. Thank you all for being here today. This past weekend, it actually might feel like it's starting to try to be fall. So, as the saying goes, happy fall, y'all. I'm going to call the role to establish our quorum. Mr. Krul, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Abert here, Dr. Adami, Mr. Garza, Mr. Loeb, Dr. Babaly.
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Kelly, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please join us as we read our Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College empowers our communities to achieve their dreams. Thank you. Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time, with exception to portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. At this time, we have an opportunity for anyone to address the board under general public comments, so items that are not on our agenda today. Is there anyone here to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to our recognitions. We are going to ask Dr. Holcomb to come forward and help us recognize our Eileen Creighton Award recipient for this year. Dr. Holcomb.
Thank you. Dr. Mark Robbins, professor of history, is the 2025 Dr. Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence recipient. Dr. Robbins is the 23rd faculty member to receive this honor. The Dr. Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence represents the late educator's distinguished legacy of master teacher. The individuals must demonstrate the qualities of having expertise in their selected teaching discipline, setting high standards to deliver exceptional instruction, and also exhibit their leadership abilities and commitment to the teaching profession. The documentation that Dr. Robbins submitted in his portfolio exemplifies his master teacher status. The portfolio documents his commitment and dedication to the college, his students and his colleagues over the past 16 years of service at Delmar College. He joined us in August of 2009. One of Dr. Robbins' colleagues described him as "an exceptional and innovative teacher whose students appreciate his warmth, humor, responsiveness, and sensitivity to the circumstances that they face in their lives," which is very important for our students. Beyond his primary teaching position as a history professor, Dr. Robbins has served the college in many capacities. He's chaired the e-Learning Advisory Committee, a member of the program review committees, such as the History Program Review, contributor to history program student learning outcomes, including creation of a critical reading exam. He's received many awards, including Teacher of the Year at Delmar College, Excellence in Teaching Award, and many others. He is a major contributor to shared governance at the college and is instrumental in sharing his time, perspectives, and dialogue with his colleagues. His work on Labor History, Memory, Cultural History, and Consumer Politics has appeared in many journals, such as Labor History, Public Historian, Oral History View, and many others. I'd like you to join me in congratulating Dr. Mark Robbins for receiving this prestigious, well-deserved award.
I just want to say this is an amazing honor and to thank you all for making Delmar such a great place. The honor is amplified for me, of course, being an historian, this being the 90th anniversary of the college's founding. It's played a special role in our community for a very long time, and it's a great privilege to just be there for just part of it, to be able to learn from my students, from all of you all, from my colleagues, who are absolutely amazing, and the staff, and the exceptional students here. I just wake up every day and people ask me how it's going, and I say, "I'm living the dream." So, I mean that truly. So, thank you again for recognizing me here. It's quite an honor.
Dr. Robbins, I'm sorry, I never do this, but I'm going to do this. You told me a story of a particular assignment that you have for your students that's brand new. Could you just share with us that example? And this is why, this is what makes Mark so special. This is what makes Dr. Robbins just amazing. Could you share that, please?
Sure. Hopefully, it works well. I have two submissions so far, but it's due in a few days. We have just a great renovation of our library. I think you all have seen it. And so, I went in there just to kind of take it in a few weeks ago and to look around and enjoy all the changes. And it occurred to me, as I'm thinking about, you know, how students could use this, I see, of course, all the books, but I also see all these learning resources. We have displays on Delmar College history. We have displays on Corpus Christi history, you know, the Jazz Fest, some of the collections there. And so, parts of the assignment incorporate them, you know, anything from reflecting on those things, taking a selfie by it. But then, I got to the fifth floor, and I'm walking around, and I'm looking at the history of Corpus Christi spatially around me. And I look over and I see my neighborhood, and I start to think about things from my neighborhood. I look over and see downtown, and I think about the Harbor Bridge, and I think about the history that went into that, and then the New Bridge there. I'm looking over at North Beach. I'm thinking about the amusement park that used to be there, and all these things. And so, for this assignment, at least one part of it, I'm going to have the students look out the window in the direction of their neighborhood and tell me a story from their neighborhood. If they just moved there, that's okay. They can, you know, find a way to connect it to something in their family history. Or it can be a history of a building that's there, a space that's important to them or just stood out to them one day. This history is really about our individual experiences at the neighborhood level, at the family level. And of course, we relate that to a national history and beyond. But I'm hoping that that assignment is just an experiment that I'm using one class to do. We'll place them in the context of the broader subject that is meaningful to all of us. And also, greedily, I get to learn from them. Then, I get to learn a little bit more about the history of Corpus Christi through what they tell me. So, that's also very exciting for me. But I'll let you all know if you ask me how it works out, because the first two that submitted, it did a great job. But it's not due yet. So, anyway, thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins, and thank you for being here today. We do thank the Faculty Selection Committee that helps recognize these outstanding faculty members every year and what an esteemed group of colleagues Dr. Robbins has joined. So, thank you for bringing that to us, Dr. Holcomb. We will now move on to our college president's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thanks, Dr. Robbins. That just made my year. That was beautiful. Such creativity. So, August 18th was our convocation. We kicked off the fall semester with music, lights, camera, action, and then there was me, eh, you know, in contrast. But seriously, it was an amazing convocation for so many reasons. And I want to thank Dr. Paul Bissell and the Coalition of the Willing, is the name of his band, not my terms, his, for a performance that really, really kicked off a year, a transitional year in so many ways, not just the 90th year, but the freedom to dream and kind of a return from COVID going on at the same time. And there's just so much that was demonstrated there. So, this convocation was like no other. And again, I owe the band lunch at Alteneo Takeria, right across the street, I think, right, Marita? I owe them. Okay, so it's coming, so I'm just waiting to fulfill that promise. But just absolutely amazing and such a presence from everybody was to be, just, I just want to thank everybody. And then, just quickly, on the 25th, this would be my only other item, is the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Center, corporation, rather, hosted Congressman Michael Cloud to our winward campus to discuss, you know, emerging trends in the economy and the workforce and those sorts of things. And so, this is a great opportunity to be able to just express, you know, the things that we are about, the things that we are doing, and the things that we need, frankly, in terms of support from our federal government and the like. There was other big employers, CCAD, numerous other industrial partners and so forth. And I just can't, I mean, I guess because we hosted it, but it seemed like a Delmar Love Fest, because every one of them sat there and said, "But for Delmar College, we couldn't do X and/or Y," and so forth. And those are really, really powerful testimonies coming from our partners out there to express, again, to our federal representative that, you know, "We need your support. We need your focus here and the like." And thanks to all others who set it up, made the arrangements, and those who also attended, including our chair of our board. Thank you, ma'am. That concludes my report. I'll answer any questions.
Do you have one more thing?
Oh, yes, I did. Hello. That's what it says right here. So, thank you. Okay, so here we have some leisurely reading that Cecile and team put together. It's the 2024-2025 statistical profile. We will have it electronically as well. But these things are, we live by these every year, and I appreciate these things. And the work, the amount of work that goes into this is absolutely incredible and appreciated. So, thank you to our research team, Cecile Palamoni, Ed Oljean, and all the others who pour their hearts and souls into this. This statistical profile tells a story. Not everybody produces these things, by the way. Many, many colleges do not, and we're one of the few that do. And we live by this, and we stay with it. Just a tidbit that I pulled out of this yesterday, because I have my own copy on my desk, as you might imagine. I wait for it anxiously, kind of like the old catalogs before the holidays, right, when you're a kid, except it's all numbers about the college. And I would just point out that last year, if you didn't know, last year was an all-time high record for the number of certificates. 707 certificates of the diploma and certificates category was achieved. 707, that's an all-time high. And then, we were also a fourth all-time high last year at the 23-24, excuse me, 24-25, no, no, it was the 23-24 year, rather, that we also set a fourth all-time high number for degrees and certificates. There are those kinds of data in there. And so, thanks again to the team for producing this, and every Regent will take one of these home for your leisurely reading. And if anybody wants one, just call my office, and we'll send one out to your area. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Eskemia, and I will add my thanks. I probably don't delve into it maybe quite as much as Regent Loeb does, but I know that there are those of us who do use it.
I'm already reading.
You're already reading. But it is very, very helpful for us to be able to have not just the current year's data, but the trend information over a course of, you know, 10, 15, 20 years in some cases. So, thank you very much for that production. We really appreciate it. And compliments to your team as well. We are going to hear from Dr. Babaly, but I wanted to give folks a heads up. We are going to take our action item number four earlier in our meeting, so as soon as Dr. Babaly finishes his Regent Report, we are going to move to action item number four. So, just wanted to give you all a heads up and the folks who are running the PowerPoint so that you can get that prepared. But we are very pleased that Dr. Ananda Babaly has continued to represent Delmar College and Regents and trustees across the U.S. with our National Association, ACCT, and its India-U.S. partnership. This is the third meeting, the third workshop that Dr. Babaly has attended in trying to establish this connection between India and the U.S. in terms of higher education and collaboration with community colleges. His expertise, his personal history, as well as his expertise as a former provost of A&amp;M Corpus Christi and now a Regent at Delmar College, makes him particularly well-suited for this work. And so, we've asked him, when he comes back from a meeting, to report to us on the work that's happening. So, Ananda, please let us know your, the latest workshop and kind of where you are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, and Regents, fellow Regents, give me one hour and I'll summarize. No, 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 I'm just kidding. So, it's my pleasure to report to you, all the Regents and our administration staff and the community at large of Delmar College. You know, we're living in challenging times, in the sense that, you know, the nature of our relationships with nations abroad, our communities within, and this is not new. We constantly struggle as a civilization, literally, on a month by month, year by year, new challenges keep coming up. So, one of the things which higher education does very historically, very kind of significantly is higher education seems to be the bridge between nations and between countries, between cultures, between civilizations. And until now, you know, it was part of the privileged few who could travel abroad and see other cultures live and practice their professions. And so, I think ACCT, as a national organization, significantly filling the space of higher education, of techniques, what Louis Mumford called "techniques and civilization," in the sense that our upskilling, our identifying certain industry needs, and addressing certain specific imperatives of the industry and higher education, and how to merge them to the benefit of our students for the future. So, I think ACCT took a wonderful lead in this. In fact, this upcoming national conference in New Orleans, the theme itself is reimagining community colleges. Reimagining, right? So, part of that, I think the ACCT embarked on identifying certain countries where a lot of skilling is going on in different and unique ways, new technologies, new professions being addressed. And ACCT wanted to get on as a leadership role, and so, the ACCT-India-United States Workforce Partnership was born last year. And fortunately, we had an industry sponsor, Cognizant Philosophies. It's a high-tech firm which is very active in the United States, space of, you know, technology and AI, cybersecurity, and how the skills are changing every day and how, you know, colleges, especially the community college spaces, that can fill this void in American higher education. So, it was launched with a one-year grant, and now they're considering re-extending that grant for another two years. We're not sure yet. Until next month, they will let us know. So, as part of this initiative, and ACCT, by the way, is not just doing this with India per se, they have also initiated a partnership with the United Kingdom. So, England and Scotland, Ireland, community colleges are also being linked with ACCT in how to merge the learning traditions, crafts, skills development, and how online education and offline education can fill the void for our students and faculty to engage in this international enterprise. So, 14 of us were invited to Washington, D.C. to continue this dialogue, and we met with the representatives from the Embassy of India in Washington, State Department of the U.S., and some industry representatives, and higher education from ACCT. So, I'm very proud to say that I was selected to play a major role in this enterprise, representing Delmar College and our communities in the region. So, for that, I'm very grateful to you. So, there were two, the first initiative was that they signed memorandum of understanding. I don't know whether, I had some photographs that I wanted to show.
Here we go.
Ah, there they are, okay. So, India-U.S. Workforce Partnership, those were the, you know, our initial gang of 14 who were putting out ideas and just how to implement our initiatives. So, there are two college professors from India in that group who signed two memoranda of understanding. You'll see there. One is from Warwick College in Maryland, and the other one is Pierce College in Washington, D.C. Both of them partnered officially now with two institutions in India in different areas of identifying what areas they wanted to connect. So, Warwick College, for example, selected what they call shipbuilding, they're in the Chesapeake Bay, by the way, okay? And shipbuilding is a major industry there. And so, India is also doing a lot of submarines, and I mean, there's a lot of construction for the first time. India is now up on as one of the major powers of military or whatever you call them. And so, the craftsmanship and work, kind of workforce development is needed in both areas to learn from each other how are the techniques going to be developed. So, they have identified that area, and fintech is another one. You know, fintech, meaning technology related to financial aspects of a country. And so, they selected those two areas to cooperate with a community college in India which specializes in those two, for example. Pierce College in Washington, state of Washington, has quite a bit of an emphasis in disaster management and emergency preparedness. And so, they selected a program in India that they can coordinate and see how things will develop in that process. So, the seed money came from this grant, which helps them both kind of solidify this partnership to launch into, you know, interesting ways that doesn't impact on their budgets or finances, but they have cooperation in the educational aspect as such. So, while they're doing that, so infrastructure development, construction, transportation, disaster management, and the second area they're looking at, the next phase, is to identify colleges that deal with nursing and elder care. Those two have been identified as areas of next phase of cooperation and finding colleges that are similar and have these programs that they can interact and coordinate with the other side of the planet. So, and stay tuned, because Delmar College is playing a role in this aspect, because we have a strong nursing program, and I'm trying to see how we can also develop related upskilling kind of enterprise, industrial manufacturing, how ports cooperate with each other, oil and gas industries. All those things are coming up as the next area of partnerships as such. So, training for industry-specific needs, developing credentials for micro-credentials, scaling for micro-credentials, and targeting specific sectors of higher education and industries is an ongoing effort. So, to summarize our next steps, what we are planning to do in this thing is that establish an ongoing working group, like I'm part of that group, and we will be continuing that, and build bilateral networks and partnerships between these countries, and strategic focus on public-private partnerships. We need to tap into how private industries can help in this process, and build institutional capacity for colleges in ACCT who wish to partner with other colleges as such. So, some areas have been emerging in these discussions, community colleges, what they should be or what they can concentrate on. Disaster and emergency management, healthcare and nursing practices, and emerging technologies in healthcare, fintech services, online, offline curriculum development, which I'm helping to do at the ACCT level, how to develop curricula that will address development of new skills and upskilling, and addressing industry-specific needs in view of the changing skills development as such. So, in that sense, that's our ongoing effort, and I will periodically report to you how this is developing. And I wanted to thank all of you and the Regents and the President for enabling me to participate in this larger ACCT activity. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Babaly? Again, thank you for spending a significant amount of time and effort on this, and again, I think it's kind of the perfect, the perfect match of skills, experience, and interest and time. So, thank you very much for doing that. So, we're going to move to our regular agenda item number four, which is discussion and possible action regarding our internal audit activity. I'm going, will, in a minute, ask Mr. Garza for kind of a report from the Audit Committee, but first, we're going to let Ms. McDonald introduce this topic, and Dan Graves, who is representing Weaver, that is our internal audit firm.
Thank you, Chair. So, as our continuing process for our internal audit, today we have Dan Graves, a partner with Weaver. He will provide you with the review and a report of our internal audit activities for FY '25. You do have a listing of the details of that. Also, some background, I just wanted to let you know that the Audit Committee of the Board did meet on August 26th, and that Mr. Graves was present, and he reported to the committee internal audit activities for FY '25, the plan status, annual report status, and FY '26 report status. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Graves to come up and go ahead and provide that review to the full board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Good afternoon, Regents. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I do have a status report. This is the same status report that we gave the Audit Committee, but wanted to go ahead and provide that to you as well. The internal audit plan, we are all but done. We previously presented to you the Senate Bill 17 compliance audit report. We do have a status on financial aid and maintenance, as well as our follow-ups, and I'll go over those individually for you. So, our internal audit over financial aid, as we reported to the Audit Committee, we were in the process of wrapping that up, expecting to be complete by August 31st. We did complete all of our fieldwork by August 31st. We're going through our review and reporting phase now, and so, we'll be able to bring that back to you at a future board meeting, the final report for that with any findings and discussion over that, but we are going through that reporting phase now. So, I don't have anything to present to you. Just as a reminder, that scope included the award of institutional, local, state, and federal financial aid, really looking at compliance, very similar to what a single audit would do, that your financial statement auditor performs, but we perform it much more in-depth and much more detailed than what a financial statement auditor would. And so, looking at IT systems as well as compliance. And we also have our internal audit over maintenance. We have started that. We've gone through a lot of deep preliminary planning, and we'll focus on facilities maintenance, construction repairs, grounds maintenance, and deferred maintenance as part of a total package inside the maintenance audit, really looking at three key areas as our objectives. The first objective being looking at the annual maintenance plans, how those are managed, monitored, and completed, as well as then looking at unscheduled maintenance. monitored, and completed, as well as then looking at unscheduled maintenance. We have two, we have planned maintenance and unplanned maintenance, looking at the completion and prioritization of unplanned maintenance, and how that wraps into the overall maintenance plan. And then third, really tying it all together, is looking at how the budgeting and planning for unplanned maintenance, planned maintenance, and deferred maintenance folds into a planning process to achieve all of those, as well as how capital projects and major renovations fold into that overall process to provide an effective managing and monitoring of the overall facilities for the college. And so that is the plan. Again, we've performed some pretty deep planning, gone through and looked at that, and we will hit the ground running in October after the, the facilities team has managed to gather all the information we've now requested after our planning. The last thing is our information security follow-ups. That was the only follow-up we had left on the plan. That is complete. That audit followed up on the one open finding that we had from prior audits, and that report has been issued. Because it's IT security, I won't go into a lot of detail here, but I can tell you that every finding that was part of the original IT security audit has been remediated, and those are completed. I know those reports are available if you'd like to look at those, and, but that is, is good news. It was a low-risk rated item, is now complete, and so that is the status for information security. The last couple of things we have for the fiscal year 2025 plan is a risk assessment update and an annual report. And so we are in the process of working with the college administration to update the risk assessment and craft a internal audit plan for fiscal year 2026. We've started some of the planning process for that, for the update. I know we'll have some items after discussing with Mr. Rivera. We'll continue to do a Senate Bill 17 compliance audit. That will be something that we'll do for a number of years, looking forward, just to continue to manage and monitor that as an emerging risk and help the college with that. So that will be one of, likely one of the items on the plan, but we have several others that we're in discussion about. So once we finalize that plan, we'll bring it to the audit committee and the board for their approval, and then that will be incorporated into our annual 2025 report. That report is prescriptive by the state auditor's office. We don't get to decide what's in it, but one of the components that is in that report is the fiscal year 2026 plan, so we can't complete that report until that's done. So we'll be bringing both of those at the same time for you in a future meeting, hopefully next month, and be able to provide that to you as a complete report for the fiscal year 2025 activities. That report is not due to the SAO, the state auditor's office, until November 1st, so we still have time to get that done, plenty of time before a filing deadline. And that is all my planned remarks. I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. I do have a, Jessica, if you'd ask Delia to check the calendars for an audit committee meeting prior to the October board meeting. So we'll need to make sure we get that on the calendar as soon as possible. Are there any questions for Mr. Graves? If not, we do need a motion to accept this audit. Actually, Mr. Garza, do you have any comments as audit committee chair?
No, just that we, we did meet, and we recommended that, in fact, it was moved and, and voted on, that we forwarded to the board. We felt comfortable with the questions that were asked and, and the answers, and so we feel that college right now is in a good position with the work that the, our auditor's doing and, and trying to keep us out of trouble.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Second by, by Mr. Loeb. Beat you to it, Dr. Babaly, sorry. Is there any comment, any question on the motion? Is there any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, all there's a favor approval of the audit report, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Now we will go back to our, safe travels back, back home. Now we'll go, go back to our staff reports, and we're going to start with a report on the write-offs of our accounts receivable. This is an annual activity that Mr. Garza shares with us, their work to collect as best they can, but we do have to have an annual write-off, and he reports this to us. Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, Madam Chair. In accordance with the college write-offs and default board policy B 4.20, student accounts receivables are written off after multiple collection efforts have been exhausted. For the current year, the total receivables written off amounts to $27,555 relating to delinquent accounts from the fall 2021 through summer 2022. While this amount, 18,667%, is attributed to financial aid recipients who received a refund prior to withdrawing from their courses. Historically, these cases have proven difficult to recover. In addition, this year's write-off represents one of the lowest in the college history. This is attributed to the financial support provided through the, her funding, which served as a critical lifeline for our students. The college's bad debt expense recovery rate currently stands at 99.3%, placing us among the highest performing institutions relative to this cohort before you. The strong forward indicator would suggest that we can expect continued low levels of student account write-offs in the near future. As a final note, a student's account will remain in place on these accounts, restricting access to academic records until the outstanding balance, balances are paid in full. There are no questions, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members of the board. This concludes my report.
Are these write-offs, how many of them, are there any of them associated with Pell Grants? It's my understanding that, that somehow the college is responsible for reimbursing the federal government if the student does not attend.
Yes, that is correct. So out of the 27,000 that we're writing off, 18,600 relates to this Pell group. That's, that's the biggest piece, and you're absolutely right. It's very difficult to try to recapture these dollars from students who, to begin with, ask for help or financial assistance to pay for, for their tuition. And so we can try everything we can, but historically, it's very difficult to collect from these students. I mean, they're, they're coming to us with a financial need that they don't have, so, but the biggest portion of the 27,000 is Pell-related, yes.
Okay. With this small amount, it doesn't make any sense to go to a collection agency to try to recoup this.
That's a very good question. And so historically, we've never worked with a collection agency, at least in the seven years that I've been here. You know, in terms of what the, the strength of the collection efforts would be from hiring a third party, again, it's Pell recipients, students, you know, and, and sometimes it's very difficult to do a skip trace on these individuals and try to find them.
The small amount, I mean, relatively speaking, 20, $18,000 of Pell Grant money is, you know, for what a collection agency would probably charge, is probably not worth it.
Yeah. I mean, yes, there is a fee for it, but when you look at the grand scheme of things, for 2022, we collected $26.6 million in tuition and fee revenues, 26. This amount that we're writing off is less than 1%, actually, it's one tenth of 1% that we're writing off, so it's very, very, very small. But yeah, I appreciate the, the insight, the recommendation. Thanks, Mr. Crowe.
Madam Chair. Yeah, I just, before your time, Mr. Garcia, I think we did make efforts, I'm looking at Ms. Alanis, because I mean, a long time ago, I think we did try to go out to a private debt collector, and it just, we got no bang for our buck for the reasons that Mr. Garcia has outlined, which just didn't pay off.
All right, any other questions?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
So I've observed often when banks are writing off debts, that they issue a 1099, considering that income to the individual who did not pay their debt. Is that option available to us?
In terms of making it a taxable event on a student who initially came to us with a financial need, but we are not utilizing that practice today. I'm not too sure how those rules would apply to, to students who have been awarded financial aid. I would have to look into it a little bit more. Essentially, the question is, is it a compensated taxable item for the student? I don't want to go take it into a deeper dive into the rules, but you know, we would have to look into it a little bit more.
Based on my experience, there's a amount that it has to exceed before
A threshold?
A threshold that it has to exceed before the entity issues a 1099.
Yeah, well, and I'm not trying to increase our administrative costs. Low likelihood of recovering.
Yeah, yeah. And in terms of cost, you shift the cost to the college as well if you do a 1099, because there's a, a cost of pulling the information, mailing the information, and that kind of stuff. So I don't know. Again, I think I may have said this before, does the squeeze justify the juice? I don't know.
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right. We'll move on to our next staff report. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Move on to our next report, Freedom to Dream Cohort Update. And you do have a revised presentation at your desk, and so Ms. Patricia, Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez and Mr. Ali Kaladules?
Yes.
Got it. Well, get the, get the presentation.
Good afternoon, regents, Madam Chair, Dr. Eskamia. We are here to share with you an update on Freedom to Dream Cohort 1, since the inception of the program. So we'll share with you a recap of our progress timeline, some data according to our student profile and initiatives, some of the lessons that we've learned and key takeaways, and some upcoming initiatives that we're planning as the semester gets onto a roll. So before you hear, you have a brief timeline of activities since we started the program, and as we're putting the slide together, I went and checked, it's only been 120 working days since the inception of the program from start to today, I was presenting this, this update to you all. So back in March, the planning and implementation work began, and our application window opened in April. We were able to use our CRM, Element 451, which has been an amazing tool specifically for this process and communication in general. We had site visits, recruitment events, application processing, registration going on in April and July, and we hit our application deadline in August. And we continued the processing as of today, which we'll show you in a couple of data slides. We have 1,734 Freedom to Dream students registered and taking classes for Fall of '25, which is pretty phenomenal considering. This slide kind of shows our enrollment trend over time from the beginning of the program, and you can see from April to May, there's not a whole lot of, of green or yellow bars in there. The reason for that was we're taking in a lot of applications and the processing work is going on. We're building out a reporting logic. Once we hit May and June, we start seeing a lot more activity of students going from prospect into accepted, and then into registered. Into July and August, you can see that 1,734 number, a fairly amazing 34% yield from applicants to registered for Fall, which I think is fairly impressive. I think our colleagues would agree. Sharing some comparisons of headcount and FTE over the next couple of slides, our total Fall '25 headcount, this is data as of 9/3, uncertified, we're showing 12,133 students, and a portion of that, of course, is the F2D cohort, 1,734, about 14% of total enrollment versus our Fall '24 headcount of 10,256. So a sizable increase, not just in total headcount, but of that population of full-time students that are coming in under this tuition waiver program. Let me pause here and see if anybody has any questions on anything yet. Then we have a comparison of our Fall '25 versus Fall '24 FTE year full-time equivalency. As of this Fall '25, we're at 7,787, unduplicated, 22% of that being the F2D cohort versus Fall '24, which was 6,334 full-time equivalency students. Dr. Eskamia had a really good insight in that, that about 1,400 students would look like closer to 2,800 to 3,000 students, the typical demographic that we see, part-time and so forth. That's a fairly big jump. Then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague here.
Hello, everyone. This slide presents key, presents key demographic insights from the Freedom to Dream cohort, including student classification, gender distribution, age groups. A significant portion of the students have zero semester credit hours, reflecting our typical community college pattern. The non-dual, the non-dual enrollment senior metric indicates that we are providing access to a large number of students that might not have otherwise enrolled, which we welcome the opportunity to expand the influence for those students. Finally, this also highlights students nearing graduation within a year of completion of a houseboy metric. Here's a snapshot of some of the most pursued academic programs of study among the Freedom to Dream cohort, distinguishing between high-demand and non-high-demand fields. It also includes majors classified as university transfer versus those that are not. Note that approximately 61% of the Freedom to Dream cohort are pursuing high-demand degrees and transfer and non-transfer fields of study.
I'm kind of surprised that the welding programs are not, not in high demand.
That was according to last year's COBOARD, how they tell us.
Yeah, there's a statewide, Mr. Crowe, first of all, high demand is a relative term.
Yeah.
I mean, we have over 1,300 welders in our, in our, at our college today. There's absolutely a high demand from both the employer side and the student side. That being said, the statewide perspective across the state of Texas is why, is what they survey, and is why they're not deeming this particular program as such.
So these categorizations are from the state, not necessarily from our local?
Correct, correct. And there is some fluidity in this, and that there are some local high demands, more localized data and research being done to shift these, these programs so that we can submit our own localized version of high-demand programs. And go ahead, and where are we with that?
We did submit, and we got an unofficial word that welding and some other programs of study that offer are going to be converted as high-demand, but we're waiting for posted on the COBOARD website.
So, so some, some fluidity in there, which is really, really good, and I think that's going to be posted for next academic year?
I think so.
Yes, right, '26, '27, and so it's hard to fathom that, that, those dates, but so stay tuned, and there'll be others. I think we get to post a total of five, five new local high-demand fields, and I think we're, we're seeing some cooperation there from the state, which is awesome.
So to follow up, that designation is not retroactive, it's from that point forward?
Correct.
No, it's not retroactive.
Okay. Once again, once again, state definitions that, that do not hold true in our service area.
However, however, we do get milestones along the way. So we do get some pay and reimbursement for
ICLCs, OSAs.
ICLCs, the smaller components of the, of the degree, of the degree leading to its completion. So there, there is money being derived from the state for these programs, some, not all, nonetheless.
So you're saying that a high-demand field is counted towards HB8 funding, and then some of these areas, some of the certificates related to these programs might count, but the program in and of itself today doesn't?
Right, not today.
No, that, that, they do count.
They do count.
They do count, yes. So if you get a Level 1 certificate in welding, and a Level 2 certificate in welding, or ICLCs, and there are these micro-credentials, stackable micro-credentials, those, we are getting points and reimbursement from it.
Yes, yeah.
We're all saying the same thing.
So there's, all right. So there's, all right.
So it's just that ultimate, that ultimate completion piece of it all that's not being deemed and weighted for funding as a high-demand field yet. We'll start next fall.
One of the flaws in their data is that they don't look at, you know, say you get an associate's in welding, they look at jobs that require an associate's in welding, they don't look at where welders go after they get an associate's and then a bachelor's, and if you, the workforce has been helping us out a lot because they have some very good software that shows the travel path of different graduates and people with different degrees, and it basically shows that welding is the, one of the gateway programs to all sorts of professions, and so that by the time they're a welder with an associate's degree, they are not doing welding every day, they're managing a welding or industrial shop or a site. And so I think we've had to go and show the state that data and reiterate to them that, no, this is, you know, it's the entry-level job for a whole host of very high-income jobs, but their data just wasn't catching that because they're thinking of people who weld barbecue pits in East Texas or something like that, you know, it's not, it's not an equivalent program.
It's amazing, when I talked to, when I've talked to colleagues and shared with them that we have 1,300 welders for a college our size is absolutely amazing, okay? And because welding is a very widespread, widely spread offered program throughout the state, it doesn't mean the same as it does to a, to a region with, you know, one of the largest ports by capacity in the world and the country and those kinds of things. So not everybody has a port of Corpus Christi, and so it's a kind of a contradiction, but we are moving in the right direction, but we, it's a little bit of an uphill battle, but we're on our way, so we're excited about that.
Well, it would seem to me, too, that these welding programs would be considered high-demand in places like the Permian Basin and
It is, it is. Comparable, comparable industrial bases and/or, you know, comparable industrial bases, they absolutely are, and they're, they're moving to the same field. Overall, the overall state as a perspective, that it was, was the metric and/or the, was the variable that was used to determine this, their numbers don't prove out that way, so we just had to move it to a localized area of emphasis like we did.
Once again, we've hijacked your presentation for a broader conversation, which we are prone to do, so sorry about that.
We're good, we're good.
But, but I think this is one of those places where external affairs, college relations, our advocacy work at the state level, we need to do a better job of telling these stories to folks who make these decisions, the Coordinating Board, the Workforce Commission, I don't know who these folks are, but we need to do, I think, do a better job of telling the story and the impact of this decision on our, our ability to fund our programs.
In the previous, and I'm just going to say this, I don't mean to drop names, but I'm going to, but the previous commissioner understood it all, but also understood, you know, he had to balance things out, he handed the reins over to the new commissioner, and we continue to make that message known to our new commissioner of higher ed, I mean, and again, I am working on a face-to-face visit, and this is part of the agenda.
But this is one of those places where our legislators could potentially help us, if they understood the impact of these decisions and how it, how it affects our funding and our conversation around what is considered credential of value, what is considered non-high demand, those kinds of things, they need to understand that impact. So again, we've hijacked the presentation, sorry about that. We'll let you continue to the next slide. Thanks, Patricia.
We're good, we're good. This slide outlines the student support, student support systems available through Freedom to Dream. A key component is success coaching with a new success coaching department in the works. Currently, the Student Success Center and the Delmar Care Team are proactively connecting with Freedom to Dream students to ensure they are engaged and supported from the start. This service is also provided across all populations we serve. The goal is to foster meaningful relationships that offer personalized support while cultivating a sense of community and belonging. The following slide illustrates some of the lessons we have learned in this initial phase of the program, such as predictive analysis, engaging with students earlier. As we begin to focus on the next iteration of Freedom to Dream, all of these indicators are being considered. This slide, this slide highlights a few new insights, early insights as we, as we have gathered from our daily engagement with Freedom to Dream. As the semester unfolds, we expect to uncover many more takeaways that will continue to inform and enhance our approach and scalability. This demonstrates that we are on the right track and that our cross-functional planning to service the entire student body.
This is great data. Questions? Thank you so much. Thanks, thanks, Ali, for reminding us that it's only been 120 workdays since we launched this. You all kind of across the college have done just a phenomenal lift on, on helping get this program off the ground. I have a follow-up question, Mr. Loval, should you go first?
I just wanted to, you know, I was so excited to get this data earlier, I wanted to give you guys some comparative data. So previous to this, you have data in here that has headcount and FTEs going back to 1991. Previous to this year, the highest headcount increase in that time period, fall to fall, was 536. So we did an 1,877 increase in headcount. The highest FTE increase was, and that, that increase was last year, actually, or '23 to '24, I'm sorry. The highest previous FTE increase was 2001 to 2002, and that was 650, and so we're at 1,453 this year. So Dr. Halcom is tired because, but, but, you know, I, I went out to one of the signup events and I saw how many of you were out there, and I, that, that was just the tip of the iceberg in terms of how much work you have all done, and so I just wanted to, you know, we, we get to sit here and vote yes and take the glory. You all and your staffs and the faculty go and do the work, and I just want to say how impressed and grateful we are because we say what the mission is, you execute the mission, and you have executed the mission. And so I, you know, we, we all have a lot of work to do to make sure these students complete, but fantastic job, and we're just really proud of all of you, and thank you for your work.
Thank you for that.
I'll second.
I do, I was asked the question, and so I don't know if it's Dr. Halcom or Dr. Eskimia, but somebody did ask me about the instructors and how we are fulfilling the need with this big jump, and so I didn't know if you had a comment on how overloads and adjunct professors and how we're filling, how we're filling the instructor need.
Yes, we've hired many additional adjuncts, and faculty are doing more overloads as well to meet the demand, and we've hired some new full-time term faculty as well, especially in the welding areas and those very high-demand areas.
And then understood that we, we did have some capacity in both online and classroom space, and so obviously utilizing that first, but then supplementing where needed.
Exactly. Thank you.
In fact, in fact, yesterday, we just spoke about a space utilization survey. We really want to see the contrast, the contrast from this fall to last fall, the space utilization. I know that's been an issue for a long time, especially coming out of COVID, and I hate to keep talking about that period, but still, it was critical because if you think about it, we opened the general academic building right before COVID, and we had all this space and so forth. But that being said, we are doing space utilization comparisons for future presentations. We'll continue to tap the wheel the next three months with, with the hopes and a reminder to the Regents that Freedom to Dream 1.5, we're calling it, not quite 2.0, will be presented in earnest at the December meeting ideally to, so that we can begin a possible next iteration, should this board approve it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Thank you, Regent Lo for your, oh, you do have a question. I was going to say, thank you for your eloquent praise, and now he has a question.
And that was much appreciated.
Well, and I, it was interesting, I was looking at the student profile, and I know we did a fantastic job of going to all the high schools in the district, and just to give everybody a sense, the thousand number there is as if half of the graduating high school students in Oasis County chose Delmar. In previous, that number has been 33%. So we don't know yet whether more people are coming to college or whether we got a bigger share of it, but I, I wanted to ask, how did we end up with 783? Because, I mean, I know we talked about it, but we didn't do a heavy Freedom to Dream marketing campaign to non-traditional students, but we ended up with a huge number of people. Do we have any idea where that came from? Word of mouth?
I'm going to give my guess, but you can
I, I think, you know, when, when the team was out there recruiting high school students, we ultimately recruited their parents and their loved ones. I think that was one, and I think, you know, all the, the advertising that was done was social media, everything. I mean, I think a lot of adults really, you know, paid attention and said, well, maybe this is, you know, a time for them. And I know a few times when I, one Saturday, I was, it was, the event had already ended, and I was walking out late, and this gentleman was coming in, and he's, he, you know, he was definitely a non-traditional student, and he was a Freedom to Dream student, and I asked him his story, and he said, I want to change my future for my family, I want more earning potential. So, I mean, I think that's, that was the appeal.
Two, two pieces. We're going to do a, a presentation, we just received some data and information regarding marketing from the college, the overall respect. That's coming next month, Jeff, or the month after?
Yeah, we'd love to share that next month. It had a couple of great insights on this point.
Yeah, and that, I got the inside scoop first thing yesterday morning from Jeff about that, and you all greatly appreciate it, you especially, Madam Chair, being in the field. And what that told us was that social media is absolutely powerful. So your estimation, Dr. Benavides-Dominguez, is absolutely on, and word of mouth is, you know, person to person is like one of the next highest categories of how people know about Delmar College. So if we can apply that data and information that we got from that marketing survey, that would be my best estimate, too, and it's our experience from going out there and all but tackling parents in the, in the parking lot to, to sign up. I will just also give full credit to this board for stepping up and distinguishing this version of a promised program, if you will, this, this, this pilot program by going the extra, going that extra step and including this most, let's just say, this, this, this population, this most precious population, I think that's the best way I can put it. That's this board's thumbprint on this program, amongst others. I think that right there distinguishes it, because that's what distinguishes us from all the other programs out there. I just have to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eskimia. Any other comments or questions?
And I just wanted to say, you know, I, I think the making sure we've got the wraparound services, I like the ideas on having a camp or something to help those who are in remedial classes before they, they jump in. I think that's really good, you know, I
Did you plant a bug in my office or something by chance? Because Dr. Halcom is, is leading, and, and we're going to bring others in for sure, but we, we just had this conversation yesterday of what is coming. It's very, very green and development, but, but are you sure you didn't put a bug in my office?
Yeah, well, you know, you, you gave the speech to the, to the whole staff, and you know, that, I think make or break is really going to be whether we can, you know, financially is whether we can get over the hump with those students, you know, if we, if we get most of them on track where they can get their degree completed because they've gotten their, you know, requirements out of the way, and they can take, you know, true college classes so they can meet their, their graduation requirements, this is going to work, and this is going to be really good for the college and the community. If we fail at that, then this is going to be hard to keep, to sustain at this level.
We, we absolutely agree, and, and Dr. Halcom and I met yesterday afternoon at 4:00. To talk about that very thing and college preparatory types of services are very, very important on a go-forward basis. Of course, we needed, as, as we stated here, we needed the data, we didn't know who we were going to attract, we had some ideas. Dr. Jonda had the best estimation, in my opinion, of who was coming, she had the most accurate, and so as such, we know that what you just said is absolutely an imperative to a go-forward basis. There's going to be some ways that we move ahead, stay tuned as soon as we can roll this out. I know Dr. Zambi's nodding because I know that's a near and dear to her heart as well. We're going to get, we're going to be working very closely with our faculty and of all of our support services teams, and, and as I said in convocation, if not us, then who? That's our opportunity, and I, we dare say it is our obligation.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next staff report is going to be on our dual enrollment in continuing education, some staffing updates. Dr. Rivera.
Good afternoon, everyone. My pleasure to provide the board and our esteemed members here with updates on our dual enrollment and continuing education division. Over the last probably close to a year, I've been working closely with the Delmar team to evaluate and discern exactly what we needed to do to optimize our division's effectiveness and efficiency, and so to that end, we were able to do some innovative things, in my opinion, that will allow us to better align ourselves with our performance measures. So what I have here on the slide right now is about five items that will be positively impacted, and as I said earlier, we'll be able to, with restructuring or repurposing of our division, optimize those Houseboy, Houseboy A performance measures, and also align ourselves with the strategic plan. We also will be able to increase our dual enrollment numbers, and right now, we have pretty healthy numbers as it is. I think we have close to about 3,800 dual enrollment students.
That is a record.
That is a record, 20% all-time high right now, and that is a huge, huge accomplishment that is actually paying tribute to all the faculty, staff that are behind me here, but really, it's, it's a great achievement. That number could only go up, and we have a lot more business to do there, I can assure you that, but that will be one of our major initiatives going forward. Also, to make sure that the student's trajectory is going to be very prescriptive so they can complete, as Dr. Eskimia noted earlier, the stackable credentials while they're in high school. So an ICLC, an OSA, a Level 1, a Level 2, if there's one available, associates and so on and so forth. So we want to make it very strategic, very stackable, and be able to optimize our funding as that result unveils. The third item that I would mention is we also want to increase our open enrollment participation, that's really through our CE, our continuing education realms. We do offer a number of career industrial training programs that are very workforce-related to our open enrollment populations. These are also offered to our high school students as well, our dual enrollment students, but we also offer on the open enrollment side to our non-dual enrollment students, just to the general public, these great training programs in such areas as welding, bookkeeping, process technology, milrite, just a number of programs that my staff and I work closely with the academic deans to really align ourselves so we could provide these opportunities to students and, and the general public at large. The fourth item is that we also want to place more focus on our adult education programs. As I mentioned and presented before, we have a very robust adult education literacy program, otherwise known as our GD program, as well as our ESL program, but we also will have soon our first-ever high school diploma program, and that's forthcoming, and that's something that's in progress now, and we hope to have that unveiled here shortly. The Coordinating Board kind of then put a pause The Corning Board kind of then put a pause to it, but there has again us to kind of circle back and strengthen some of our initiatives. We are one of five colleges in the state that received this opportunity, and so all five colleges are reevaluating and realigning ourselves with the Corning Board's vision of this high school diploma program. I would venture to say we should be up and running by spring of this year. We wanted to do it initially in fall, but the Corning Board has kind of pulled back and said, "Let's make sure we do this right moving forward." So, that'll be a spring launch, definitely. And lastly, we also want to increase our grant funding opportunities. I will say that through our division, we've amassed probably well over $10 million in grants over the last eight years or less. And that's a tribute to a lot of folks that, again, are on our team, in particular, soon-to-be Dr. Rachel Benavides and her mastermind in developing these grant applications and managing them. But we work with all factions of the college. We work with our academic deans, program managers, directors across the entire campus to make sure that this is gonna be aligned also with House Bill 8, but also aligned with our strategic plan and mission going forward. So, what I have to provide you today is two executive-level position, positions that we were able to work out through the Delmar team. I'm very proud to announce that we have Ms. Rachel Soonabee, Dr. Benavides, Dean of Continuing Community Education. Rachel oversees our adult education programs, our business registration services, our community education piece, our continuing education career industrial programs, our grant administration, as I said earlier, over $10 million and counting, and also our off-campus operations, i.e. our Rockport Center, which will be coming online this spring of '26. Similarly, I'd like to also recognize we've been very, very fortunate to have Dr. Chrissy Urbic, our inaugural interim dean of dual enrollment. She will oversee our K-12 partnerships, as well as our dual enrollment programming, our Texas Education Agency school designations such as PTEC, such as early college high school designations and such. We also have our dual enrollment specialists that she will oversee, which we have about, I believe about eight of them, I think, right at this moment, and also oversee our MOU administration of our dual enrollment programs, and also have a more robust enrollment ISD teacher Delmar faculty training program that will be able to be launched through Dr. Urbic's just oversight. So, that's soon to come, and that's something that will happen here shortly. And I'm gonna invite both of them to come up to the podium, because, yes, 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 yes. I know they're by me, that was the plan, was to bring them up over here, because obviously, as they make their rounds forward, I'm very proud to introduce our director-level positions. We have, in no particular order, we have Melinda Aguilar, our Director of Community Education. We have Mr. John Beaufort, Director of Adult Education Literacy Grant Programs.
Raise your hand when you see, because not everybody knows everybody.
Dr. Angelica Gomez, Director of Dual Enrollment. There, she's right near front center. We have Ms. Mary Guetta, Interim Director of Business and Registration Services. And I'm gonna pause here, I want to recognize Mary. She just earned her MBA just recently, so I guess we give her a round of applause for that terrific accomplishment. We also have Ms. Jennifer Howard, Director of English as a Second Language Grant Program. Where she, right there, she's right there, right by John. We have Ms. Leanna Josselin, RN, Interim Director of Healthcare Programs. Side note, Leanna will be soon a nurse practitioner. She's working on that, so let's give her a round of applause. She's about to start her clinicals here soon. So, yeah, again, just to show, we have high-quality people that are overseeing these programs that are so key to not only Delmar College and our community, but our House Bill 8 funding metrics. Not here today, we have Mr. Robert Montes, Director of ISD Designated Programs and MOUs. And then we have Ms. Rebecca Salinas, Interim Director of Career Industry Programs. So, I believe that's everyone, including, I guess, as I said, Dr. Urbic and soon-to-be Dr. Benavides. And I want to have them provide you a little, some comments that they want to share with you. So, I'm gonna invite Ms. Benavides up to the podium first, followed by Dr. Urbic.
Good afternoon, Board of Regents, Madam Chair, President Eskimia. We're so grateful for the opportunity today to introduce our wonderful and amazing staff to you. There are so many great things at work here, and we're just super excited to be able to be a part of the conversation. House Bill 8 has really changed things for continuing education. We're a really ambitious and motivated group, and we strive to do great things. And so, I think that you'll see evidence of that in the data as we move forward throughout the next year. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to let us introduce everyone to you, and again, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Dr. Urbic.
Hello, Madam Chair, Board of Regents, Dr. Eskimia. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to getting to learn and grow from both of the people behind me and everyone over here. I think almost in every board meeting or meeting, we talk about dual enrollment in some form or fashion, and so I'm just excited to be able to share that with you and to continue our vision of continuing, moving this forward to be able to offer more opportunities for our dual credit and dual enrollment students. So, thank you for your time, and I'm just ready for this opportunity and looking forward to it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And just some statistics, we have over 70 full-time staff in our division, 54 full-time, 16 part-time, and we also have about 200 instructors. It may be more, depends, it ebbs and flows as we need them. That's quite a bit of folks that we have in our division. And again, it couldn't be done without the directors, or the deans that we have, and the entire Delmar community and staff behind us. It's a team effort, a college effort all around. And so, I want to, again, thank you so much for the support that you have given us, and if there's any questions, we're happy to entertain those at this time.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to compliment Dr. Eskimia and you, Dr. Rivera, for really thinking about changing the shape of how we do this. The workforce in continuing education pieces, the contract training, has always been important to Delmar College, but it is better integrated, it is more comprehensive, and to recognize that our potential students are students as young as ninth grade to as old as 80 years old and maybe even older. But that we do have such a breadth of potential out there, and that your division, along with the academic divisions, obviously allow us to do that breadth and depth of offerings to those potential students out there. So, thank you for what you do, because as David eloquently put it a few minutes ago, you all get to live out the mission that we call you to live out every day, and so we want to thank you for that. So, congratulations, good job.
Also, I want to, just real quick, I want, I gotta point out Coach, because there, again, Mr. Conrad Garcia. He's right here, and he's looking in amazement to me, but I want to give him a round of applause. He really does work in tandem with us at all levels. And Mr. Garcia, thank you so much for the wisdom and the coaching, really, that is provided by him. We're just so grateful to have him on board, and appreciate your help, Coach, pretty do, so.
Well, I just wanted to go back. So, did I see that right, that we have a plank that is getting high schools' teachers certified or accredited to be able to teach our dual credit? Is that, we're working on that?
Under Dr. Urbic, the dual enrollment ISD teacher and Delmar faculty training.
Yeah, that's what that is?
Yeah, it's to better prepare them for the classroom. What happens many times, and what we want to be able to do is make the experience more robust for our, not only our Delmar instructors, our betting instructors, but even those that are credentialed at the ISD or a public school level. That's so important, because we want to maintain that rigor, we want to maintain the quality that Delmar's known for, and so by such, we want to make sure that we have training and workshops that prepare the folks that are gonna be doing the teaching, the dual enrollment teaching, that's even on the CE side as well, to ensure that that quality is carried out in the way that needs to be, and then the way it's intended to be.
No, I think that's great, you know, because I get a lot, we get a huge amount of feedback that's positive from ISD folks, you know. I check my email more often because of the letter Flower Bluff wrote us. But, you know, one of the things we've heard is that students now are kind of preferring, hey, can we have in-person dual credit? And so, I know we've been working on, how do we get more professors in the classrooms? And one of the ways to do that is to make the teachers that are already there professors. And so, I really think that's great. The other thing I wanted to say is my college roommate is kind of one of the higher-ups in New York City's internal education and workforce programs, and he called me because he figured out what Freedom to Dream was, and, you know, was talking to me about it. And then he was talking about how, you know, they were doing an adult education program for their staff, and they have hundreds of thousands of employees, and that, you know, only seven had signed up. And I said, "Oh, well, we've, you know, we've got one where you do high school, you know, you do high school equivalency, and then you get a certificate at the same time in a workforce training field." And he's like, "Really?" And he said, "I've never heard of that before." He's like, "Can you send that to me?" And so, you know, I sent him a bunch of links to what we're doing, and he's like, he's like, "Wow, I'm trying to think about how we get this stuff through the state." But, so, you know, you're way ahead of them.
We'll be having to talk to him if ever he chooses to do that.
Yeah, I'll ask him. He's still digesting the first round of stuff I sent him, but, no, I mean, that's how impressive and advanced what it is y'all are doing every day.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Not because it is a record, but the number of dual credit students that we have took so long, so long to get past the 3,000 mark. And here we are, I don't want to just glaze over that number, it's 30, almost 3,800, instead of 37-plus.
Yes.
And the effort, the years of relationship building, the work, the effort, the time, the blood, sweat, and tears, figuratively speaking, I hope, that it took to get there is an amazing feat. And not to be, you know, just kind of glance over. So, we're gonna continue, we're gonna have a full report next month, and so forth, we're gonna take a deeper dive, but what this team has been doing over the years in different capacities and everything else, and leading up to this, is extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you. And one little footnote, I would dare not to say before I leave, if you want more information on who these folks are, including myself, but we have a new production, The North Star, that was produced by Jeff Olson's team and others. And so, on that, there is video strengthening student success that just was released on Friday. So, if, I want to say it's out there already, and so just share that with y'all, and you have an opportunity to take a look at that video, and you'll get to meet the team up close and personal. So, thank you all, have a good day.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Thank you all for being here, appreciate it.
Ms. Jessica, if we can make a note, too.
All right, so next we're gonna hear from Ms. McDonald on our policy review schedule for the upcoming fiscal year. As you know, our board policy does require some, a specific calendar of board review, and so she's gonna tell us where we are this year.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, and we have made a habit the last several years to bring our schedule to the board in September, so that we lay out what our schedule has in store for you throughout the year, but also we have other changes that will come forth. But I am going to pass it to Ms. Alanese, because she's gonna walk us through that process and through our timeline.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Regents, and Dr. Eskimia. So, today, as Ms. McDonald said, we are going to provide you with a status on the policy review process and the schedule, and what's being done, and what you can expect to see in this next fiscal and academic year. So, before you, you see the review schedule as we've brought to you in the past, and in this year's schedule, Chapter 1 and Chapter 2 have been designated for review. And in that review, we will look at the chapters to ensure that we are in compliance, and also make any revisions to any legal or procedural changes that have come to us from the previous legislative session. And so, we will particularly concentrate on those two chapters per the schedule, but also look at the policy manual in its entirety for those legislative changes and updates. So, Chapter 1 is known as our introduction chapter. This particular chapter has information that is specific to our vision, our mission, and our core values for the institution. We did see some changes to this chapter in 2024 with the additions of the values of the Viking Way, and the changes to our vision and our mission statements. But we'll take this opportunity for this fiscal year to look at the chapter in its entirety, to make sure everything else that needs to be updated is updated and that we're in compliance. Our Chapter 2 section is known as our administrative organizational chapter. This particular chapter has information related to the administrative structure and the organizational structure of the college, but also talks about committees and council narratives, so we will review that as well. But this particular chapter does also contain quite a bit of information related to the Board of Regents. Any changes in that particular sections or sections of that in this chapter will come to the board for review as appropriately. We did see some changes to Chapter 2 recently in August with the changes to Senate Bill 37 related to faculty council, so we've already started looking at this chapter to make sure that we are staying up to date with what we need to with the current or future effective So, this is the schedule for this fiscal year. In September and October, we are looking at reviewing the chapters in totality and seeing what we do need to update. We know that there's been quite a bit of legislative changes that have come through with current and upcoming effective dates, so we will use September, October, and November to flag any changes or sections that we do need to revise and bring forward to the board. We will bring those changes and policy recommendations to the board during October, November, and December months, and then any changes made to administrative procedure, we will bring those forward as a board notification. We will use the spring semester, January through August, to look at the, any last bit of changes we have to Chapter 1 and Chapter 2, but kind of also see where we just need to fill in some gaps and any kind of revisions that we need to, according to the schedule or anything that may come up that needs to be addressed. Ms. McDonald will talk about some more specific changes to this.
Thank you, Ms. Alanese. So, just to give you some heads up, so what we plan on October, November, December, what we will specifically bring into the boards, we anticipate bringing recommendations for board, either action, because it's a B policy that you have to take action on, or notification, because it's one of those A or administrative sections that we notify you, there was an administrative procedural change, and it's based on legislation, because this legislation could have an effective date of basically this fall or by 1/1. So, specifically, as SB 2615, which is the telework bill, that is in effect, we are complying with it, we will bring you some policy-specific language for you to adopt. The SB 2972, which is free speech, because there have been some changes that are required for free speech, so we're working with general counsel on that. And then SB 37, as Ms. Alanese mentioned, we did bring part of that to you, because it had a 9-1 effective date, that was the faculty council structure. But then the other pieces to SB 37 go into effect 1-1, so we will be bringing you pieces of that to review. It covers shared governance, changes in curriculum, a couple changes with hiring and personnel evaluations at a certain level. So, there will be some changes that might move to the president, should be some changes that moves to the board. So, we will be bringing those two over the next three months. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I'm gonna ask the board members if you're, if you want to glance over those first two chapters, and if there's anything that we, you feel like we need to discuss and have a conversation on at the board level. Staff's gonna bring us their recommendations, but those are the two chapters that most directly relate to the work that we do around this table. So, if there is something that you'd like to discuss in a workshop setting, and we can ask for input or some research from staff to make any revisions, now is the time to do that. So, just let me know. But if I don't, if I don't hear anything, then I'll assume no news, is let staff do their work, and we'll look at it when it comes back to us. But take a look at it if you have time, please.
And Chair, may I add, in that section you're referring to that has to do with the board, there's also a link to your bylaws, which is a separate document, but it is linked in that particular chapter. So, if you might want to look at that also, it is, the link to it is included in that particular chapter that we're reviewing right now, yes.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. All right. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. And then Dr. Holcomb is going to talk to us about the deactivation of a couple of programs. And this is not an action item today. It's a report. And would there be future action or we'll stay at the end of the presentation?
Yeah, exactly.
It's a report today. Madam Chair of Regents, Dr. Eskamia, I'm trying to keep you informed of when we deactivate programs or certain certificates. What I'm presenting today, and actually I've asked two of my deans to assist in the presentations. These deactivations were approved by the department chairs, the academic deans, curriculum committee and myself this past year. So we're here to keep you informed. In the course of doing normal business, we continually evaluate our programs. We formally go through a five-year cycle of review of each and every associate program. We look at enrollments, number of graduates, number of majors. We look at the relevance and importance of the program to today's world. For example, computer science is ever evolving, so they have to reinvent themselves quite frequently. And we have to look at what are the relevant skills today, the workforce demand. We are doing our due diligence by deactivating some of our programs. I have asked Dean Davis Merrill, Dean of Industry and Public Service, and Dr. Jack Sutherland, Dean of the STEM and Kinesiology and Education Division, to present the deactivations in their relevant or respective areas. Dean Merrill.
Good afternoon. My report deals with two program deactivations and one OSA deactivation. The first is Autobody. Autobody Applied Technology with the AAS Autobody Applied Program, Certificate One Introduction to Non-Structural Collision Repair. Certificate Two is the Autobody Structural Refinishing and Repair Specialist. This program had zero declared certificates options in '23 and '24, and six declared majors in the AAS degree plan in '23 and zero in '24. Two graduates and six certifications were completed during the teachout of existing students in the spring of '24. The sole instructor retired in the spring of '24, and most of the students surveyed in the program were in the program to work on personal projects and not interested in full-time employment in the field of study. In review, six declared majors in 2023, zero declared majors in '24, two graduates in the AAS degree and six certificates in 2024 during the teachout. No negative impact or effect on faculty due to the retirement, no sustainable demand by industry, and automation and cheaper products have increased the availability of parts for people to do bolt-on repairs themselves. The second one is Aviation Maintenance Airframe Applied Technology Occupational Skills Award. This award was deactivated because it did not allow entry into the aviation field because of the strict requirements of the FAA regarding airframe and power plant repair and maintenance. OSAs are created to allow completers to enter the workforce as a helper or assist to work in the industry, but that is not allowed in certain fields of study, including the aviation maintenance program. The aviation program works on a block schedule and follows a degree plan that has very few options outside. Students with the OSA had no opportunity for actual maintenance options, and therefore the award has been deactivated. No graduates in the OSA in the past five years, only one major in '23, '24, and that was an error, and then no negative impact on the faculty. The final one is Industrial Machining Applied Technology. This is a deactivation of the entire program. AAS Industrial Machining Applied Technology with a Certificate One Job Shop Machining, Certificate One Computerized Numerical Controls or CNC Machining, and Certificate Two Industrial Machining Applied Technology. Two declared majors in the certificate program in '23 and '24, four declared majors in the AAS program in '23, and 15 in '24, but that was due to the teachout and the instructor retiring as well. One graduate in the AAS degree and one certificate were awarded in spring of '24. Students that were interested in continuing in a similar field moved to Millwright Process Technology or Welding. The teachout occurred in fall of '23 and spring of '24. The remaining students moved to other programs in industrial tech. No negative effect on faculty due to the retirement, no demand by industry, basically because of apprentices by employers. Lab space has been repurposed for welding with a tentative completion of 10:25 of this year. Automation has exponentially increased in this area, and on-the-job training is the norm. We had two adjuncts in the past, and neither were interested in full-time employment.
Before you leave, Dean Merrill, I think Mr. Kroll has a question.
The aviation kind of surprises me a little bit with respect to CCAD. I mean, what's our relationship there? And have we provided, talked to them about creating a program that would support them?
We do have conversation with them. The only issue is with their work schedule and our block schedule, it's difficult for them. I know they've got different shifts, but one of the things was our students in the aviation program are here for about six to seven hours a day. And so that's difficult for them to be a part of sometimes.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is maybe we can create some kind of a program that would support our students moving into working at CCAD in the future. I mean, I don't know whether they do on-the-job training out there or have some kind of apprenticeship programs or whatever. But I know the workforce out there is aging out.
Well, and that's another thing, the sustainability of that specific OSA. We may get interest with three or four people one semester, and we may not have any in the next one. And so we're looking at it from a sustainability over the years, and it's just not there.
There's a bigger, broader relationship that still exists with CCAD. And we send hundreds of our graduates, if not more, I mean, upwards of 1,000, I think, were just recently, a couple of years ago. Come on, Paul, you got some you got some input?
The majority of our aviation students are employed after graduation.
Yes.
Through the Navy at CCAD, in Corpus, Kingsville, and through CCAD. And the OSA was originally created specifically for CCAD, but we still continuously do a lot of work with them through our corporate services and our contract training to adapt to it. And so the normal student will take the block schedule that we have in the aviation program, and then they're ready to go on for the full-time employment, or take the FAA certification and go work for the commercials.
So this is one small segment, one small segment as it pertains to that.
It's not the deactivation of the program or anything like that.
Just one particular piece.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dean Merrill?
Well, go ahead.
Dr. Sutherland?
Yeah, good afternoon. And we have five programs that we deactivated in the division of Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics, Kinesiology and Education. And among those include a Level Two Certificate in Interactive Game Technology and Simulation. As noted, there's been a steady decline in the number of majors over the previous years. There were seven majors a year ago. Seven certificates have been awarded in the past five years. Another Level Two Certificate, another Level Two Certificate is in the IT Essentials, Computer Programming. Zero graduates the last five years, three majors in fall of '24. And the department quickly recognized that there was a need to do something for those students. And so one of the things they've done is develop a stackable credentials towards an AAS in computer programming, so that those students have a segue towards a gainful employment. So this was recommended by the faculty, the chair, the dean, and due to the declining enrollment. And so no full-time faculty are affected. Also, and I think there was a couple more.
The computer has a mind of its own at the moment.
Yes, it does. Okay, also in the Department of Computer Science, Engineering, Advanced Technology, CCET, there's Associate Applied Science in Web Development, and a Level One Certificate in Web Design Essentials. As with the other programs, there was, over the previous five years, there were five certificates and five AAS degrees awarded, and so on and so forth. So it's simply due to declining enrollment. The good news here again is that there are courses that they took in these particular programs can easily be stacked in another program within that department. And again, no, no full-time faculty were affected by that. Okay, in Department of Natural Sciences, we had also deactivated Associate in Science and Chemical Engineering. We had five graduates over the past five years, and we had seven total graduates since inception in 2017. The good news is all seven of those went on to earn their bachelor's degree in chemical engineering. So it wasn't for lack of preparation. They're very well prepared. Six of those, A and M Kingsville, one of those, University of Houston. And we, again, but we saw a decline in enrollment and graduation rates. And also one of the courses that was needed in that degree plan is Engineering 2333, Elementary Chemical Engineering. But the silver lining here is that with proper advising, a student majoring in chemistry can have all 60 hours count towards a chemical engineering degree. And so that's, again, there's always a premental advising. So there's a silver lining there. And again, no full-time faculty were affected by that particular deactivation. Any questions with regard to what I've said?
Okay, the last deactivation is from the Allied Health Department. It's the Advanced Technical Certificate, which is generally done after somebody already has graduated. But it hasn't proven to be successful over the years with only six graduates in the past five years, only three majors in fall of 2024, and enrollment that you can see is only averaging about seven students in the past five years. So we're trying to do our due diligence once again in deactivating programs. It's just the normal business that we're doing. I just want to keep the board informed of what we are deactivating. And you'll see more of these reports through Senate Bill 37. It will be required to even report more approvals and deactivations. Yes, Dr. Eskamia?
Mr. Kroll has a question first, please.
Yes.
On the long-term care of nursing, it's kind of surprising in that we have an aging population. And this is administration. This is not.
It's administration.
So this would be somebody that wants to create a company that would would provide that service.
Work for a company.
Or work for a company.
Yeah, I don't know if Dean Schrammick, did you have anything else you wanted to say about?
So this was a post-baccalaureate program. And so the people that came in already had a bachelor's degree. The Advanced Technical Certificate is just six additional classes that they try to pick up for a certification. So we found a lot of them were going back to their original bachelor's institution to take those classes. And the universities that are offering it are offering it in an online format. So they tended to go back to those original places to get that.
The other part of it is, I think, in Dr. Babaly's presentation, he talked about nursing and long-term care as being programs that would align with, potentially align with other institutions. And so I just, my question might be is, if we get rid of this program, how does that affect Dr. Babaly's efforts?
I don't think it would affect his efforts. I would need to know more information about Dr. Babaly's proposal.
I'll jump in there. And sometimes it's, you know, this process is a natural process of maintaining and managing the curriculum, as Dr. Holcomb was saying. This is what colleges and universities are supposed to do.
Yes.
Okay, as such. But to answer your question, Regent Kroll, sometimes, and many times, it's best to use your university partners so that they can do what they're best at and so that we can augment them and provide the fundamental part. So a student going through our program and receiving a BSN, and then moving on to an administrative program, for instance, is the best because the university's has an optimal type of outcome for them and/or credential and so forth. So that's what a lot of this is going to be about. And sometimes it's just working with our community, on the AAS or the terminal industrial programs and so forth. Sometimes it's just, there's new technologies out there. There's new things, you know, it's not the old Autobody shop classes that we, you know, we all grew up with and so forth. And so this is, this is the evolutionary process of our curriculum as such. And again, I want to emphasize this, you had a question over the weekend about, you know, the universities pulling up an A, an associate degree for their program. It's a stopgap parachute for their students and so forth. They, and I'm in communication with our, with our local presidents and so forth. You know, they do things that are kind of cross-pollinating with us, but they do things, in that case, they're doing this associate degree because it's a stopgap for those students that are just dropping out and need and have 60 hours and need something to save them. I fully support that. And again, I fully support when they do things better than we do and so forth, support them to make sure that they are ultimately to improve and support that student's experience.
Well said. Thank you, Dr. Eskamia.
I've been thinking about it. Regent Kroll tipped me this weekend, so I had to get ready for that.
Mr. Kelly, and then we'll go back to Dr. Babaly.
Okay. I have to admit, some of these categories really surprised me, but I think you've done a good job of explaining what was going on. And I think I heard this, and I want to make sure I did. It sounds as though for any of the students that we had that were engaged in these majors, you found other programs for them so that they can continue and get their certifications or degrees.
Yes. Or there was a teachout plan where they could, you're supposed to give two to three years to do a teachout plan so they can finish the degree.
Okay.
And that's what we have done. Some of them, I know that the Healthcare Administration, they plan to teach that out end of spring of next year. So it's all about the student. But I do want to point out, the coordinating board, they look at our programs, and they have five-year cycles where they look at our low enrollments. They expect us to take care of our programs and not keep them if they're not producing. So I want to add that too.
Okay. Well, and that's what I wanted to hear. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Dr. Babaly?
Madam Provost, my question relates to how many of these deactivated programs have been impacted by competing environment around higher education in our region? I mean, any, or do you see anything coming up too? Because in view of TAMU CC, you know, announcing a two-year associate degree, do you see, or do you predict, any of our programs being adversely affected by?
I don't, I think they're, like Dr. Eskamia said, they're doing it for a different purpose. There may be somebody there working towards a bachelor's degree and they cannot get their bachelor's degree. So then instead of letting them just leave, they can give them an associate degree, and at least they leave with something. I do not believe it's supposed to be in direct competition for us.
It's not. Correct.
And, you know, it's a stop-out type of process. And they talked about that a couple of years ago, and that's what they said they would do.
A and M Kingsville, I spoke with Dr. Vella a couple of years ago when they went through this. Again, it's a parachute. It's a rescue mechanism for those students that have to stop out with 60 hours. We want that student to have something. It's not a plan to proliferate associate degrees. I was in touch with Dr. Miller this, last week, if not, if not yesterday, I think it was late last week, either way, recently in preparation for this meeting. And as I've communicated, we fully support that. Anything to help those students out in a state of, it's usually a state of an emergency where they have to step out for some reason. We wholeheartedly support it. It's not an associate degree program to proliferate the two-year degrees. It's a whole different mechanism. And again, I've been in touch with both local presidents, and we support it.
So they are not supposed to advertise the two-year program, right? I mean, and...
Correct. That won't be... Excuse me. That is, that is the purpose. It is a built-in option for their students.
Yeah.
And it's not something that they're going out there and soliciting associate degrees and those sorts of things. Again, it's only for a student that's proven to need to step out, stop out, and otherwise pause their career to have a little parachute. Again, I keep using that term, to safely get into the workforce with some sort of credential. If they have 60 hours and they can't finish out that junior, senior year, you know, we want to help them.
They can leave with something.
Yes.
That's what's important.
Mr. Loeb?
So as I understand this, there's some programs that just aren't necessary anymore, especially like the classes like CNC. We don't need to teach people to use CNC machines because... CNC machines because you, CNC machines, now you load a blueprint into it and it runs it automatically, right? I mean...
Yeah, as opposed to the traditional mill and lathe where you're standing there hours on end. Now with the CNC, it's more programming than it is anything else.
Okay.
So automation is is taking a lot of these programs.
And and then we have something like chemical engineering where we aren't getting rid of chemical engineering, the class, we are just getting rid of the degree program. You can still take chemical engineering, the class, and then go on and get a chemical engineering bachelor's.
Chemistry.
Or, sorry, chemistry. And that way, we're not, you know, there's not the, we're not getting rid of the class, we're just getting rid of the special degree for it because we don't have enough people to do that one.
That's exactly right. And so that student would actually have the option of pursuing a bachelor's in chemistry or a bachelor's in the chemical engineering. It's very versatile.
Okay, right. And and so, I mean, I I think maybe if you could, in the future, when you show these to us, if there's like a, an elimination of a class, kind of designate that a little bit to make it a little clearer to us, because I I understand that, you know, we want to provide degrees that are flexible, because if it's just railroaded into one career or one job, and that job is going away, we don't want to, we don't want to set somebody up to not have prospects. And I think, you know, I'm going to be brutally honest, it was, it was really alien to me because the state I went to college in, like, you could kind of choose your own degree if you wanted to, you know, it was more about what classes you took, and you could kind of make up your own degree program, and they'd, you know, send it through some process, and you could put a name on it, and that's what you got your degree in. And so this kind of whole bureaucratic bureaucratic system where there's like specific degrees that are defined by the states, a little weird to me. But yeah, I mean, I I think just in the future, being able to understand, okay, are we getting rid of a class, or are we just getting rid of a a label for a group of classes?
Yeah. It's a communications piece first.
We'll do that.
Yes, please, duly noted. I mean, it's a communications piece, you know, how are we reaching out to the students and so forth? And what we thought, by repackaging, if you will, and putting that label, that that term of the degree program, in this case, chemical engineering, it did not attract as 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 much as as bringing students into the curriculum, giving them the experience, allow them to explore and discover the things and the various options. It worked better, it was more conducive, as I heard from the faculty and have 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 heard of from the faculty over the years, that once the students begin to explore, experience the relationships with the professors and so forth, that it was, the natural chemical engineers, if you will, would come out that way. It was a more indirect kind of approach to the marketing and and so forth. It speaks to the skill sets of of our faculty. And and Dr. Sutherland, your PhD in chemistry, so you're pretty familiar with what we're talking here, more specifically. So it it's, that's what we're finding with the students, and so, and and there are expectations. The coordinating board monitors this, they expect things. I mean, the, we we can be, I don't want to say sanctioned, but we will certainly, we we could be called upon for 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 the lack of this maintenance, a management of the curriculum.
Exactly.
Very serious thing.
Yes, they even put reports out of every school's low-producing programs, so we want to do our due diligence. Yes. Thank you for your suggestions, Mr. Loeb.
Well, we appreciate this, and we appreciate the the ongoing process of program review that we know happens year-round. So as you as you continue to refine programs and offerings and classes and add add them where they're needed and deactivate them where there there's not the demand anymore, so we know that is a continual improvement process that we are very much a part of. So thank you very much for bringing this. Any other questions for Dr. Halcom, Dr. Sutherland, Dr. Merrill? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I just gave you a promotion, Dean. Dean Merrill, not Dr. Merrill.
Take it.
All right. Next item is our pending business list. We have quarterly financial reports, CLERE report, our Title Nine reports, strategic plan, enrollment management plan, strategic marketing plan, enrollment report, all these things coming up in October and November. If there's any questions or please let us know. We will move on to our consent agenda items.
I have one point of fact check.
Absolutely.
A little fact-check clarification. When we were doing the dual enrollment and CE of Dr. Rivera's presentation, there was there was a little point of clarification that I needed to make and so forth, and and I think he made it, and, but I wanted to emphasize that the credentialing, the actual credentialing and qualification of our faculty comes from Dr. Halcom. Dr. Leonard and Dr. Jonda work very closely in tandem when it comes to credentialing, dual enrollment, and/or all faculty in the respective areas. Ultimately, it is approved by Dr. Halcom. My hat's off to them for working so closely together in doing this, but I just wanted to make that point of distinction. So Leonard will go out there and rustle up all the qualified people and everything and all their credentials, and they'll sit there and he'll give his once-over, but ultimately it goes to our chief academic officer for final credentialing. I just had to make that point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move on to our consent agenda items. We have three items, approval of minutes, acceptance of investments and financials that were provided to the board. Is there anything needs to be pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb, and second by Mr. Krul. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. All right, having taken care of our one action item already, the board will now go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel, and Texas Government Code 551.074A1, personnel matters regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, dismissal of a public officer employee. The time is 2:56 PM. We'll take a short recess, and then we'll meet in the closed session room. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are coming back from closed session at 4:07 PM. There is no action item coming out of closed session. The last item on our agenda is related to our calendaring, so there are a few of us that are going to our state annual conference later on this month. Our next board meeting will be October the 14th, and then our national conferences in October as well. Our November board meeting will be on the 11th, and December board meeting on the 9th. Wanted to call to your attention that, let's see, you have the CAT Annual Conference, oh, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing. In December, there is the Texas Higher Edge, the coordinating board's annual conference. It does overlap with our board meeting that month, so I don't know that anybody from Delmar will be able to go, but if you really feel like you need to go, let's talk about your, where you'll be when. The last thing is a reminder that the Hector P. Garcia luncheon is on Wednesday, the 17th, at Osso Creek Campus in the Tres Cress Community Room. And so if anyone would like to attend that, please let Delia Pettis know. And with that, I'm sorry.
Chair, I have a, the city council is considering the creation of the TERS Number Seven, and in that presentation, they make some assumptions that Delmar is going to join in that. Have we had any conversations with city staff regarding that?
We will put that on our agenda. We can't discuss it today, but we'll put that on agenda for a future briefing. So, and we'll, and Dr. Eskamia will give you a call about that.
All right.
Okay. All right. With that, we will adjourn the meeting at 4:09 PM.